I know, I know all the technical lines. I need to go. I know. 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 Once again, good morning. I'm going to reconvene the regular session. We have one executive session on, Council.
Considerations leaving issues related to November 2014 termination of Select Development and Construction Incorporated's contract for roadway improvements on the D road included in this session was new advice on proposed tender agreement received from Select Surety. Council recommends approval of the negotiated tender agreement once it is finalized and is substantially equivalent to that discussion in executive session.
I move approval. Is there a second? Motion and a second to approve. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving then back to the regular agenda, the Board of Supervisors sitting as the Board of Supervisors, item eight, approval of the consent calendar. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I call for the motion to be divided to allow for separate consideration of items five and six.
Items five and six under procurement?
Correct.
Okay. With that, there's...well, she...um, these are two different items. We didn't actually need a second. She called a deposition. With that, let's then vote on the remaining items on the consent calendar. What's the pleasure of the Board on those?
Madam Chair, I will move the remainder of consent.
Second. Motion and a second to approve remainder of consent. Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to item five, procurement award, low bid for K&amp;G Construction. Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I was looking for some clarification. We got information on this that was conflicting. First of all, it appears this project is now at 808,000, which we have that information, but there was some estimated bond funding in 1997 Hirth. It shows 1.1 million from the DOT 53 and then estimated other funding, which I assume are from the CIP projects that are not affiliated with bond, as 1.3 million for a total funding of 2.4 million. I was just looking for some clarification and reconcile the issue between the 808,000 and the 2.4 million. It's not real clear what is going on in this contract.
Mr. Huckleberry, Ms. Garnellio.
Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the board, let me let the Transportation Director answer this question.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, this particular project has a number of different funding sources in it. And I have some DOT 53, which is, I think, like the Summit Hill, I mean, bond monies. And I have RTA monies. I have some RTA and about 44% and Tucson Water monies. And this particular project, and what we're doing is we are doing some relocation of the roadway and putting in significant drainage improvements in that area to more directly have a much better intersection than we did at New Galis Highway.
And why are...
I think yours was a reconciliation issue.
Yes, between the numbers that are on 808,000 is what the contract amount is for, 808,000, and then I see the 1997 bond program. We have estimated funding for this road at 1.1 million and then estimated other funding, which assumes RTA and Tucson Water, et cetera, 1.3 million for a total of 2.4 million. I just, first of all, how much work has been completed to date?
We've had to purchase, Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, we've had to purchase, I believe, some right-of-way in that area as well as pay for some of the relocations in that area also for Tucson Water.
Okay, so that would make up the other, having this over a million dollars more, and half of it is unaccounted for in the summary. So I'm just curious why we have a $2.4 million budget and we're funding it for 808 million, or excuse me, 808,000.
Supervisor Miller, I don't have the exact breakdown and I can provide that to you at a...but not right now.
Okay. The Hirth is, we also have a Hirth monies in there and those are for road repair. Where are we using those in this contract?
Those are bond, Hirth bond monies, are they not?
No, these are separate. It says Hirth, 1% of the...
Well, 1% of the project, I think.
The bond monies were the DOT 53. Am I understanding that correctly?
Oh, so the question is, the DOT 53 is that Hirth and then there's additional Hirth. And is that current Hirth, not related, non-bond related? Mr. Huckleberry?
Right.
Madam Chair, and members of the board, let me try and help clear this up here. Very often, if you're looking at a 97 bond program, you have a scope written that's probably 10 or 15 years old and it's best estimate at the time with regard to what the project cost may entail. And that's revised over time until you get to an actual construction bid, which is really this document from today. And it's comprised of a number of sources. This project's been ongoing and off again simply because of the issue of whether or not it interfered with or could be substituted by the aerospace parkway relocation. And so it's now back on because we, at one time, had thought we'd even moved the aerospace parkway connection to Galis at this intersection as opposed to remaining at the intersection where it is today, Galis City's access. It is also not unusual to have Hirth monies, which are cash contributions as opposed to Hirth bonds included in bond program projects, simply to complete projects that we have, over time, used bond funds and then made what we call Hirth capital cash transfers to the CIP program that also then completes these projects from time to time. The amount of monies that appear to be here is very, very small, but we do do and historically always have used a capital contribution from the actual Hirth funds that are received by the county for purposes of capital highway construction.
Okay. And then I just wondered how much of the work is done on this project other than some purchases? Has any other work been commenced or completed?
Or we just did wide-way acquisition. Is that it, or where are we on this?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, within acquisitions, it's all been done because we are going out to construction now.
Okay, so you've done acquisitions today?
Yes.
So these monies are for actual construction?
That's correct. This is just for the bid. It's the 808,000 for the bid for construction.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And with that clarification, I'll go ahead and move this item.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to item six, low bid, and this is for network equipment. Supervisor Miller.
Okay. Again, we show that the amount for this contract is 3 million plus. And we show 70% coming from the general fund and then 30% coming from a non-bond capital improvement program. And so I understand where that is, but we had two contractors do the low bids for 1.972 million and then two other contractors that bidded at 2.1 million. I just wanted to be reconciled between the 2 million and 1 million and why we're paying more than a bid.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, the intent was to award to two vendors on this particular one that came in with the lowest cost quotes. For anything that's purchased under this award, we're going to compete it between the two awardees so that we'll have a kind of a secondary quote process to make sure we're getting the lowest price for anything that we buy under this award.
Okay, then why are we off by a million dollars? That's what I'm missing here is the...
Again, it's a reconciliation issue, as best I can understand.
Yeah, the funding source shows 3 million and then we have two contractors with a low bid at 1.9 million, 1.972 million, so...
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, the Department have to answer to the funding. We don't get involved in procurement other than the procurement process itself.
Do you want to continue the audit until you get the answer?
I'll move to continue on.
Ma'am, I believe that somebody can answer the question.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, when we put out this solicitation...
Identify yourself to the record.
Anthony Casella, Deputy Director IT. When we put out this solicitation, we actually gave all of the bidders kind of a quote sampling of different types of network equipment and also maintenance. And so that allowed us to basically see what the quotes would come back as.
But what's the...again, the reconciliation issue needs to be answered.
It's a million dollars off.
You've got 3 million and then they come in at 1.9 million. That's a difference of 1.1 million. So which is the real number?
I have to review it and get back to you then.
Okay. Madam Chair, the other question I have so that we can have this information when we come back is worldwide. One of the bidders made some comments and requests for modifications to the offer agreement. I know you haven't awarded anything yet, but they did a lot of modification to this agreement and I just wanted to ensure that those modifications were addressed. They highlighted and went through the whole document and I assume you're going to be reviewing that when you go to award it.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, that's already been accomplished and we've reached agreement in working with that particular firm, so it's County Attorney.
Okay, so that'll be in the background for the next meeting. So I'll move to continue our consent calendar. Item six, until...will you be prepared to answer?
First meeting in March, I think.
Is the first meeting in March adequate for everyone to answer? Okay.
Okay, continue till March 3rd?
Thank you.
Okay, motion in a second. Any objections? We'll continue till March 3rd. Moving on to item nine, Industrial Development Authority and Resolution 2015-7. What's the pleasure of the Board on Limbon Academy of Excellence project?
I'll move approval.
Motion and a second to approve item nine and Resolution 2015-7. If there are no objections, motion carries. Moving on to item 10, Recorder, Unfinished Business Ratification. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I'll move approval of ratification pursuant to Resolution Number 1993-200.
I'll second. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to hearings now. Boards of...Board of Supervisors, item 11, Unfinished Business Hearing, Appeal of Review Officer's Decision Pursuant to Our Board Policy D 22.10. And who's from staff going...Mr. Burke. Why are all those people standing behind you?
The changing of the guard here.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a continuation of a hearing that was in December on an appeal by the property owners Ray and Elaine Spindler for the classification that the assessor placed on their tax parcel, Tax Parcel 304-28-5240, which is a residence in Green Valley. The assessor classified their property as a residential property but not a primary residence. The taxpayers have appealed claiming that this is their primary residence. The differential between the primary residence and residential property that's not primary is the state tax aid that is provided. In this particular case, that is roughly $134. I reviewed the appeal and made the recommendation that the Board uphold the assessor's finding and deny the appeal for the following reasons. The property owners live at the property for nine months of the year, which is significant, but throughout 2014, they were not registered to vote in Arizona. They did not have Arizona's driver's license or have their vehicle registered in Arizona. Instead, they were in their home state of Montana. So because they had not established Arizona as their primary residence by not becoming residents but maintaining licenses and voting in another state, I believe that this is not qualified for primary residence to take, to get advantage of the state aid to schools.
That exists next year. Yeah, just a quick question. I thought with driver's licenses and that sort of thing, if you resided in the state for six months, you had to have an Arizona license, am I mistaken?
Madam Chair, there is a statute in Arizona that cited in the materials, it's 283151, that requires that anybody in Arizona have a valid Arizona driver's license unless, as an exemption, they have a valid license from their home state. So if you have Arizona as your estate, I don't believe it's a six-month, I believe it's a much shorter period, but at any rate, the statute does require that if you live in Arizona as your residence, you have to have an Arizona driver's license.
And they're claiming it's primary residence, so that would then make, they would be in violation of that statute?
If, in fact, that Green Valley, this property is their primary residence, then they should have had an Arizona driver's license, yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Carroll.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mr. Burke, you have not heard from Ray or Elaine Spindler since the December meeting when they went with a continuance to get an Arizona driver's license, is what I assumed. You have not heard, nor are they here today?
Madam Chair...
Is Steve Palin here today? No, apparently not.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Carroll, that's correct. I have not heard from them.
Have they ever had any follow-up with your office since that date?
They have not reached out to us, no. And I'll point to comment that even if they did now switch to the Arizona driver's license, it would not have been in 2014, which is the tax year in question.
We understand.
And Clark informed me that they were notified. They were noticed. What's the pleasure of the Board? This is a hearing.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carroll.
I'd like to go ahead and move to close the public hearing. Approve the, support the hearing officer's decision and deny the appeal of the review officer's decision under the item for Ray and Elaine Spindler, Tax Parcel 304-28-5240, for legal tax, for legal class three for tax year 2014.
Second. Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none. Supervisor.
Before we go, I just want to make sure that Supervisor Carroll's motion is clear. Your motion was to uphold the appeal officer's decision, right? Deny the appeal. That's good.
And uphold the...
I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Okay, thank you. There are no objections. Motion carries. Moving on to franchises, license and permits. This is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on items 12 and 13? If not, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I move to close the public hearing and approve franchise license permit for 0610028 and also number 13, hearing, excuse me, extension of patio permit 06100203.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on then to development services and item 14, hearing type three, conditional use, P 2114-023 Fenster Ranch School, East Ocatillo Drive. These are hearings. Is the applicant in the audience? Is he or manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, my name is Will Pugh. I represent Sabino Recovery. I have some maps that I'd like to give to the clerk. I just would like to clarify, our application is for a leasehold that encompasses the majority of the two western parcels of the Fenster school property. It does not encompass any of the floodplain and as such, we are requesting that the conditional use permit only apply to the actual leasehold and not to all of the property that Fenster School owns. And as such, then there would be no need for the, any trail easements. And Fenster School is willing to grant a future flow easement if any development does occur on that easternmost parcel. It's hard to see from this map, but this is the eastern parcel. It is not a part of the leasehold. The leasehold essentially is this red outlined area and it has not actually been surveyed yet, so this is an approximate, but it's pretty close to what Sabino Recovery will be leasing from Fenster School. I'm going to ask Jack O'Donnell, who's principal of Sabino Recovery, project to answer the questions you all may have that are a little bit more particular, unless you have any questions for me now about the...
Any questions?
Excuse me. The question that I have is that the, this is just the two parcels, correct, and this other one was, this is an Indian burial ground over here on the eastern half of the property?
You know, I'm not familiar with any of the history of that property. It may be that that's the case. But it just, it doesn't really, it doesn't, wouldn't serve any function for Sabino Recovery and so Sabino Recovery will be leasing the school buildings, the existing stable structure. And so essentially, all of the western two parcels, except for residential structures, which are in the lower southwest corner, which Planning and Zoning Commission also acknowledged would be carved out. And it would not encompass any of the 100-year floodplain, which I've shown on this little diagram.
Which is where the blue is, right?
What's that?
100 years, is that the blue?
I believe that is correct. That's a greater than 10,000 cubic feet per second wash. That's us off of the county map guide, so...
Well, I was concerned about the floodplain as well. Because floodplains change. And so you've tried to attempt to exclude it here and I recognize that, but I think you should also realize that floodplain maps are subject to change as well as actual floodplains.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's a concern that could come up here eventually.
Right. And, you know, it's also important to note, Sabino Recovery has no intention to do any new construction. They're going to only be using existing facilities that are already on the property and doing interior renovations, but the footprints of those buildings won't change. And so nothing in the floodplain or close to that floodplain should be an issue.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is that floodplain is subject to change.
Yes.
Well, as you and your clients understand.
Any further questions?
I think that Jack can answer a more specific question.
Any questions for...any...no. Okay, we may need you later. Andrew Turley, you have three minutes. Limit your remarks to the item at hand and do not be repetitive. Andrew Turley.
That was me, sorry.
Okay.
I have a son I need to pick up from preschool post haste. I came in opposition to developing this property into substance abuse diagnostic and treatment facility because of the fact that I have three small children that live in a house immediately next to this. I also want to note that there's a grade school and a middle school within a short walking distance and there's no barriers. The only thing that connects my house and the grade schools to all these facilities are small foot trails and dirt roads that are easily accessible and visible. Our concern is having a potential migration of drug trafficking into our neighborhood, into an area where people are known to be addicts. It seems extremely plausible in my mind that they may dump drugs on their way into this facility or that people will bring them drugs. It's not a secure facility. There's not walls or fences maintaining them within a certain space. I understand their want to make this, to feel more relaxed and luxury. I think maybe a more remote location that is not close, that does not give them access to neighborhoods would be more suitable than this current location. I think that's mostly what I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
James Paul? Wow, oh, that's not...sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm not going to jam around.
It's R A U, right?
R A U.
Not P A U, okay.
No problem.
Okay.
I live at 5260 North Sabino Drive. There are three houses in our community that border the west flank of Fenster and we're the three that almost look...
You want to look at the, see the map down there, point out where you are.
We are right here.
Okay.
And I'm right there. My wife, she was right there as well. We have a little bit of buffer because of lovely oleanders. The two houses north to us have no buffer. In fact, they could be looking into that community without being interested in who's there and see lots of things and hear lots of things. I absolutely oppose Sabino Recovery LLC's request for a type... I absolutely oppose Sabino Recovery LLC's request for a type three conditional use permit. I ask that you deny it. I presume you've read my letter to you all on February the 10th. I point out six points. What I'll mention here is I would appreciate that you identify, I could identify the board members and what their histories by research, other than Mr. Thomas Esbell. I have nothing on him, and I'd like to know more about him. I couldn't find anything in my research.
And just for the clarification, you mean the board members of the group now?
He's the fourth board member. Three of them are, you can easily find out data about them. Point two is in their application, on one line states, quote, "residential inpatient behavioral health treatment facility," and on most of the other, the other times they use that one, and Mr. O'Donnell has discussed this. The implication is that they won't be applying for a medical license. We'd like to know that, because if they're applying for a medical license, that's usually because they want to do detox, and that raises the level of the pathologic severity of the patients they'll be admitting. We'd like to know that. In my view, Sabino Recovery, their group, is underreporting to an extreme degree the severity of the mental illness as a way to misinform both the neighborhood residents and the board as well. This strategy of misinformation helps them avoid discussing matters which might get neighbors unsettled, anxious, or even fearful about the extent of the problems. They use the term "guest." Being a psychologist, I use the term "a patient's will and reality." Indeed. If you vote to grant them the license, I ask that you put into law, if that's the right term, what they've stated. And this is on page nine of my note. They'll never seek out a medical license, so they can't do detox. They won't seek out an outpatient license, because that would cut down on the vehicles coming in. They will include in all marketing and in their application for state of Arizona licensure that they in fact do not take persons with, quote, they use this term, "serious mental illness." They'll tell people that. They have to put that in their marketing, and also would have to go in their marketing, what they put on their application, no long-term history of psychiatric admissions. If they're honest about that, they won't have many patients. But let them put that in, right? But I ask that you deny the application. Any questions about my letter?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Sturtin?
Madam Chair, members of the board supervisors. I'm Charles Sturtin. I submitted a letter in opposition to the request for this conditional use permit in view of the time limits that I have to present to you the reasons why. I hope that you'll take the time to read that. I attached to it an article from earlier this month from the Arizona Daily Star regarding suicides at Sierra Tucson, three in just over a year. And that has been dismissed by the applicant as not being a serious concern. My wife and I have owned for more than 20 years a property that's just around the corner from Fenster School property. The applicant intends to have more than 50 addicts and seriously mentally disturbed people concentrated in that area in a residential neighborhood. This is not Canyon Ranch. These people are not there to improve their lifestyle. These are people who are desperate enough to pay $35,000 to $45,000 for a stay at this facility. This is not an assisted living facility. This is not a memory care facility where the patients pose no risk to the neighborhood. On top of that, the applicant has never given us any plan that they have for security, to monitor the patients, to protect the neighborhood from the patients, and for that matter, just to protect the patients from themselves and from each other. We've asked for that. All they told us at the planning and zoning hearing on this was that they were going to take attendance. And if you review that article from the Star, you'll see that that was Sierra Tucson's plan as well, and their, their patient died in his room, and it took them two hours to find the patient. If, if you still, over what we think are reasonable objections, decide to grant this conditional use permit, on the last page of my letter, I listed the special conditions that I think should be imposed, and I think that are more than reasonable, and essentially all of which the applicant has said they don't intend to admit patients that would contradict any of these conditions. First, no patients be accepted that either court ordered for treatment or seeking deferred prosecution or dismissal of prosecution for any criminal offense. No patients be accepted that are seeking treatment or have any history of sex addiction. No patients accepted that have any history of violent behavior. No patients accepted that have stated or implied any recent or current intentions of suicide. The applicant formulate a reasonable and comprehensive security plan so they could video monitor these patients. As we understand it, as they told us in the neighborhood meeting and Supervisor Miller, you were there, all they said was these people are free to walk out of their rooms and leave. They have no way to keep them. They can go wherever they like. Their statement to us was they're going to go anywhere, they're not going to be unescorted. Well, that's just not realistic. And further, that the, the conditional use permit have a sunset provision, so if this business is sold, that the neighbors have another opportunity to come back and object. The applicant has already been in this business before and was involved in Sierra Tucson, which he sold. So we want to know that if that happens again, they're going to have to come back and start over.
Thank you. Mary Cole? Mary Leah Cole, Mary Lee Cole?
Thank you. I just wanted to add my support for what the previous two gentlemen said. I represent the homeowners right next to the rows and immediately adjacent to the property, and wanted to request that you do put into the conditional use permit the fact that certain types of patients that they will be able, that they will not be able to see, meaning sex offenders, those with felony history, et cetera, and especially that they be required to put some sort of barrier in place so that there's a secure area, and in addition, that there be security personnel that will monitor the behavior to protect the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Norrie Nelson?
I'm Norrie Nelson. I live at 8258 East Red Horned Trail in Hidden Valley. I'm also the president of the Hidden Valley Homeowners Association, and I'm here in support of Sabino Recovery. In the context that we've had, we are comfortable that that kind of a facility lends itself better to the neighborhood than some others that are currently under construction, like Avila Homes. We also learned from Mr. Fenster that one of the considerations was a school for teenage offenders, which we thought was less attractive than Sabino Recovery's plan. We do agree that there should be conditions that restrict the kind of patients to those 18 and older, those who have no history of sex offense and/or not convicted felonies. We have heard them talk about advanced and enhanced security measures that we thought would address some of the concerns about people being able to leave their premises. Other than that, we feel that their proposal should go forward.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Does the applicant wish to respond to the issues that have been raised?
Madam Chair.
And state your name for the record.
My name's Jack O'Donnell. This is Nancy O'Donnell. Madam Chair, board members, and Administrator Humpelberry, thank you for today, this opportunity. First, to just address experience and our board. First up, Pat Manley is a founding partner in this business, resident, and has been involved in the business nonprofit for 23-plus years. The head of policy here in Tucson, so it's significant experience. Also with us today is June Garrett, who is our chief financial officer. My wife Nancy O'Donnell, she will respond to some of the clinical aspects of this. She has 23-plus years of experience in this business, having been a clinical director of facilities and having written programs, and specifically having written the treatment model for this facility, which we've emphasized many, many times is different. And I suppose you can only know that it's different because we wrote it, and that, I don't believe that's been appreciated, that we're trying to do something different in this, in this business. I have...
Could you address specifically what seems to be the concern of everybody who spoke in opposition, and that is the type of plans, the type of security, and...
The other issue, Madam Chair, was the, and I see this in the agreement, were the list of conditions that the one gentleman read, medical licensing, no... Right, et cetera. That's on page four of the...
Sure. We'll talk about the medical licensing, which my wife is writing the...
Well, I guess what, what they are requesting is that if we approve this, that those would be conditions that are part of the conditional use.
Oh, sure. We have said from, from day one that there's a certain type of person that fits into the program that we're doing, and it doesn't include violent individuals. It doesn't include sex offenders.
But again, would you be willing, would you accept that as part of the condition of use?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'd just like to say that I wrote the admission criteria and the exclusionary criteria, and those conditions already exist in that, as we're applying to the Board of Behavioral Health for a behavioral health residential facility license.
This is a condition, Mr. Porter, this is your case? Porter, I'm sorry.
Quite all right, Madam Chairman. Yeah, I guess it is my case. Would you like me to respond to some of these issues?
Well, yeah, I mean, they've, they've obviously written these into the application they have of the, I guess, granting level of the state board, is it a state board? That's a state board, or is that a...
State board.
State board. So I guess my question is, can these then be included as a, as part of the conditional use standard and special conditions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, absolutely. If I could just back up a little bit, the original recommendation that went through the Planning and Zoning Commission did articulate several of these categories specifically out of the material, so it was very clear what kind of patient, resident clientele we're talking about. In their final deliberations, the Planning and Zoning Commission decided to, rather than have a specific list, basically revise that condition, and this is what's before you today, to make it all-encompassing for, for all of the descriptions that they had put in their submittal materials, which was even more detailed than what the condition had. So we can either keep it that way and have the, their own submittal materials be the condition that gives us some enforcement authority for all types of patient population that would be there, or we could go back to a more defined, finite list, as was the original recommendation. So that, that's how we've kind of gotten to where we are today.
Okay. Proceed on. So Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask the question about the security. That seems to be a major concern for people. And I, when I was attending a meeting, I recall that every patient would be escorted. Is that correct, outside the facility?
When they, if they were to leave the facility, they would be escorted, absolutely. If they're, we really have pretty minimal programming off, off the property, but if they were to leave the facility, they would absolutely be escorted, as most would be escorted in.
And, let's see, other questions I have. Could you explain how your business model differs, or is the same as Sierra Tucson? Is there any difference in the business model?
Well, yes, I, I think there's a, just the basic, you know, treatment model is different, and really who we are treating, all the way up to the licensing requirement. The Sierra Tucson has the highest psychiatric license that's available in the state, along with a special condition, so that they can take people at the highest level. And most, and, and there had, there was, just to clarify the record, there was a clear philosophical change when we sold that business in terms of the acuity level that the new owners began to take at Sierra Tucson. The issues that are described in the last 18 months were hardly our issues, having sold the business almost 10 years ago. And, and I think we had a, you know, really an outstanding record for patient security, and in particular for, for, for neighborhood security. 25 years, and I can promise you that we never got one single complaint from the Salvo community or any of the other surrounding homes, because we did have, have good policies and procedures in place.
Okay, and the other question, I think, is for staff. The, I guess someone brought up that there's potential for young offenders at the, at the school. There was a lady that spoke in support, and she mentioned that. So if that, is that, I guess that was a question that I had, is that, you know, if they had to do, if they wanted to do a school for young offenders, like the Fenster School, would they have to get a conditional use permit, or would they be able to go in with the existing?
Oh, yeah, that's a staff question.
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, board members, it would depend on the type, as to whether or not it would be allowed or would not be allowed. Any type of public school or charter school is going to be an outright allowable use on the property. Once you get into mandated or children, court ordered children, it might not even be an allowable use.
Okay, thank you.
And let me add in to Mr. Porter. In terms of the options, these would be the conditions that the neighbors are concerned about, which is one that you, which way would you go? What would, what option would you recommend that would give you the best enforcement authority?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I would recommend if, if the concern is with the whole breadth of the potential population, it's best to pretty much leave it the way it is, because we have a very detailed document that's been referenced in the condition, which basically gives us the enforcement authority, such that if there's any divergence from that, we have something that can initiate remedial action with the owner.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
The way we looked at this, we saw this conditional use permit as covering the entire property.
Excuse me, could you speak up?
Okay. And I think I heard the first speaker indicate that he thought it was only going to cover a portion of the property. Has the permit been altered in any way?
Madam Chair, members of the board, that's a good technical point that we need to discuss here. Right now, the permit as it stands, the application, is for the entire 140 some acres. There's not been any formal request to amend and alter it. There have been discussions, some of which have been shared with us, and some of which have been presented here today. So to the extent that the board wants to proceed with modifying the limits, and I think what the intent of the applicant is, is to basically have the conditional use permit be consistent with their proposed lease boundary. Is that accurate? Right. So, so that's, that's basically using...
So that we would have to amend the...
We would have to amend the conditions in order to do that, such that if you look at conditions numbers seven, eight, and nine of the proposed recommendation, all of those pertain to either the protection of Sabino Canyon Creek floodplain, the regulatory floodplain, the granting of trail easements. All of those things occur within the floodway area, and were included because of the original application, which included the entire 140 acre property. So if you cut those out, we either have to amend those conditions or delete seven, eight, and nine altogether. That would be at the board's...
And right now, it applies to the whole property, so if we want to narrow it so that the use would be, it would be more restrictive, were we to narrow the boundaries? That would require amending those three conditions?
Madam Chair, that, that's correct. You would be restricting the use to only now the defined area of the lease. But right now, technically, the use is for the entire 140 acres, although they're also bound to the site plan, which says... the site plan, which says, and the submitted materials, which says that there will be no expansion of the existing facilities whatsoever.
Well, that was my next question.
So it makes a lot of sense to pare it down. But from a technical perspective, including all 140 acres in the application, everything east of Sabino Canyon, even though it's SR zone and developable, would be per this site plan, the forest, which would mean nothing would occur there. So if there's no desire or intent in any way to use the property east of Sabino Creek, it does make sense to now pare it down with something more now gets to their lease boundary.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I think that would bring up a notice issue from a legal standpoint because this was put before the public as a, as a permit.
I just would like to say, we would like to make, you know, we would consent and hope that the board would amend, as Mr. DeVon has suggested.
Shrink the footprint. And Mr. Weaver has just indicated that if we were to do that, we could not accomplish that today because it would be a notice issue because that would be a major change. Is that what you're indicating, Mr. Weaver?
I think that's potentially correct, Madam Chair. This was noticed as a, as a restriction on the entire property. If you reduce the area of the permit, then, then those areas that are not affected are loaded up to other uses. So I think there's, there may be a notice question there.
With all due respect, we did notice all of the neighbors for all of the 10,000.
No, 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 this is changing the boundary. It's, we know you've noticed everybody. That's not the issue. The notice issue that we're speaking about right now is public notice because there's been a substantial change in the original presentation by if we were to shrink the footprint, as you indicated you'd like us to do.
Madam Chair, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we did make clear that we were not going to be using or leasing the eastern parcel and-
I understand that, but if we are to, to ordinance in the shrinking, we'd have to then post additional public notice. Mr. Portner, Mr. Portner, do you agree with Mr. Weaver?
Madam Chair, board members, this was raised at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, a little bit by the applicant. In addition, we're not allowing additional uses. The only thing that's changing is the site plan. It's not that, the, the site plan isn't going to allow additional uses, but it would allow SR uses on that eastern property. And so in the applicant's material, they-
Now, if, if we use the current footprint and not shrink it, can they have SR uses on the remaining portion of the property? If your answer is no, then we have to renotice.
Yeah, not without amending the conditional use permit.
So we have to renotice. That really is what this says. If we shrink.
Madam Chair, Planning and Zoning considered that issue and did-
I know, but it wasn't noticed. Any thoughts?
Sure. Madam Chair, what we're, what we're talking about here is another way, alternative way that you can keep the boundary as it is. I think the concern is that with respect to the fact that the easternmost property has development rights under SR zone, those could be retained. You could simply add a condition that says development, the existing SR development rights on the eastern, easternmost parcel remain in place for future development. That wouldn't require an amendment to the conditional use permit application because they would simply be doing things if they state within that zoning classification that are already allowed by law. And now we're dealing with the same notice area as was heard by the P and Z and-
So it would be an additional condition, just restating their existing laws.
Yeah. From our perspective, that covers it. From the county attorney's perspective, I don't know, there may be other big issues there, but-
Mr. Weaver, what do you think?
I think that's okay, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we know what we're doing? I'm going to try this.
Madam Chair, I move we close the public hearing, P 21, Debs 14-023, Fenster Ranch School located at Eva 05 East Okatia Drive and approve the type three conditional use permit for a residential substance abuse diagnostic and treatment facility as requested by Sabino Recovery Group. Subject to the hearing, administrators, standard and special conditions as amended, modified, and recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And this final, could you state that, please?
Mr. Portner, you want to say what the final, adding the following condition?
Madam Chair, I don't remember what I said.
Neither do I. We are, no, we're not, no, we're going to leave those. But we're just going to add that the existing SR-
Yes, Madam Chair.
Chris, Chris, I'll let Chris take a stab.
Oh, I wanted to do that.
Okay, I know, Chris. Just somebody do that.
Madam Chair, and simply to get on the record that the board, the approval of the conditional use permit is recognizing that the easternmost parcel would still maintain the underlying permitted SR uses.
So we will add that as condition number?
That would be condition number, that would be condition number 10.
Okay.
That would be condition number 10. And I think we might want to add verbiage that says something along the line, and would be subject to all standard submittal review and approval processes as required under any standard SR development.
Correct.
Just to make it clear. And then Supervisor Elias, your comment is accurate. Now we're back to conditions number seven or seven, excuse me.
Seven, nine.
I'm sure I'm looking at the right version. Hold on. I'm sorry, that would be condition number 11. The new one would be condition number 11 because P and Z added a condition. So now we go back to seven, eight, and nine, which would still apply because the, the entire floodway is included. So now we have the requirements for managing there about the trail easement, somehow dealing with a set aside of the Sabino Creek floodway, which I believe the applicant may want to speak to because part of their concern was not wanting to deal with those conditions since the leased property did not encompass those areas. So I'm sorry to bring that wrench into the works, but I think we need to discuss it.
So Madam Chair and members of the board, the issue really comes down to what the landlord will agree to on this. And landlord has stated that they are not amenable to agreeing to trail easements. And so although Sabino Recovery may be fine with such an easement, we can't agree to that without the landlord's consent because they own the property. So although we have submitted this application and shepherded through this process, we're bound by Fenster School.
So what, because this is a leased property, then conditions seven, eight, and nine, you cannot agree to, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay. I don't see any way out of this except to continue it and-
Madam Chair, is continuance, you know, will essentially end this, this project because, well, not necessarily end it, but we're, timing is critical here and, and we need to move forward.
I don't see that there's any way we can if you need to get rid of condition seven, eight, and nine.
Well, I think that the, the underlying concern is that the floodplain easement, Fenster School has agreed to grant a future easement in, in event any construction occurs on that property. So I think that that would address the, the flowage concern. And as far as the trail easement, you know, at any time in the future when this property is developed, you know, 10 or 20 years, the, the ability for the county to get a trail easement at that time would still be there. And the trails don't connect to anything.
No, you're missing the point. We can't get rid of condition seven, eight, and nine today. So we have to approve with seven, eight, and nine, or we have to continue and readvertise.
Madam Chair.
Unless you have a better solution.
One, one other idea just to throw out there. We've done this on many past cases where you have things like this where it's, it's conditioned, but the final determination and execution of that is always subject to a lot of discussion between the property owner, in this case, the applicant, and Pima County. This, this case would be the floodplain district. It would also be the National Resource Parks and Recreation Department. So we could include these conditions, leave them in here, and like we always do, sit down with everybody and work out to the extent that we can.